Foreign being present, I call the Committee on Finance and Administration to order. Just to start things off easily, I would like to make a motion to move into executive session. It aligns with Sections 105(c), 105(b), and 105(f). I'm in New York State Open Meetings Law. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any opposition? Seeing none, we will move into executive session.
Myte, I think you need to stay for this.
I will.
I make a motion to reconvene the public meeting of the Finance and Administration Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any opposition? Seeing none, we are reconvening. To take up the following items for approval, as we always do. Action Item 1A is the approval of the minutes of the November 25, 2024, meeting. I move the approval of Action Item 1A. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. We will now address Policy Item 1B, the policy calendar. Policy Item 1B1 says, "A resolution to authorize an enterprise license agreement with VMware's products following Broadcom's acquisition of VMware. The university seeks approval to enter into a five-year agreement that purchases essential VMware products from April 4, 2025 to April 3, 2030, at an annual cost of $3,501,791 and 30 cents, plus an additional 10% reserve to cover additional requirements for a total amount not to exceed $19,259,852 over the five-year period. The services will be procured utilizing a Federal General Service Administration contract subject to availability." Vice Chancellor for Information Technology and University Chief Information Officer Sev Formoso is available to provide further background on this item or to answer any questions as needed. I move the approval of Policy Item 1B1. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? Do we need further information for Sev? Or is this pretty self-explanatory? I think it's explanatory. Thank you. Seeing nothing, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate.
Aye.
And opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Thank you. Policy Item 1B2 is a resolution to authorize a credit with B&amp;H Photo and Electronics Corp. for audio, video, and photography equipment. The university is seeking approval to enter into a contract with B&amp;H Photo and Electronics Corp. for an amount not to exceed $15 million over a period of three years utilizing the E&amp;I Consortium contract advantageous, which will allow the university to achieve substantial savings. Chief Procurement and Supplier Diversity Officer Martin Sturia is available to provide further background information on this and to answer any questions. I move the approval of Policy Item 1B2. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussions about B&amp;H? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy Item 1B3 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Outfront Media. I'm going to sneeze. You'll excuse me, please. Or not. To place digital and print advertising in the New York City subway system. They've been great, Mark. Outfront Media is the sole handler of advertising opportunities for the MTA and its subsidiaries. In May 2022, the Board of Trustees of CUNY approved and authorized the university to enter into a sole-source contract with Outfront Media for a period of five years, from fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '27, and for an amount not to exceed $10 million. The university is now seeking authorization to expand the aforementioned contract for an additional not-to- exceed amount of $12,500,000. Senior Vice Chancellor for Communications and Marketing, Myte Junko, is available to provide further background on this item or to answer any questions as needed. I move the approval of Policy Item 1B3. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? You've all seen the ads on the subways and whatever. I mean, it's a--
It's Metro North.
It's a whole new world out there. Thank you.
Three for every dream. That's right.
We bring them in-house, in case you don't ride the subway.
Exactly. We missed a break.
Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy Item 1B4 is a resolution to authorize a contract with WW Granger Inc. for maintenance repairs and operating supplies. The City University of New York currently purchases maintenance, repair, and operating supplies across all campuses and the central office through the Granger catalog available in the CUNY Buy marketplace. The university is currently conducting a competitive solicitation to establish a new centralized contract for maintenance, repair, and operating supplies, and requires an extension of the current contract to allow time to complete and finalize the competitive solicitation. The university is seeking approval for a contract extension with Granger for an amount not to exceed $4 million over a period of six months, from January 1, 2025 to June 30, 2025. Again, Chief Procurement Officer Sturia is available to provide additional information if needed. I move the approval of Policy Item 1B4. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy Item 1B5 is a resolution to authorize terms of the professional staff Congress/CUNY collective bargaining agreement to apply to current employees and excluded titles. Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista is available to provide further background on this item or to answer any questions as needed. I move approval of Policy Item 1B5. Do I have a second?
Second.
Hector, can you explain this a little bit? This is for the non-covered employees.
Yeah, so this should have been included in the-- and when we approved the overall contract, the board approved it. It should have been included in there. And it was sort of, as we were trying to get that approved, we didn't-- this was not included in there. But these are sort of confidential assistance, like my staff, people that work in my area that are-- I deal with sensitive information. They're not represented by the union, but they get all the benefits that, you know, if there's any contract. So this is a practice that we've done for as long as we've had these contracts. So that's really the short of it.
Any questions or discussions? We'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy Item 1B6 is a resolution to approve the Personal Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee. The January and February 2025 Personnel Matters Report is generated from employee data entered to the university's system of record between October 21, 2024, and December 16, 2024, and does not contain appointments that have been submitted as individual resolutions. The report contains 34 ECP actions, including 16 regular appointments, eight interim appointments or extensions of interim appointments, seven separations, and three salary changes. Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista is available to provide further information. I move the approval of Policy Item 1B6. Do I have a second? Any discussion or questions about the report? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy Items 1B7 through 1B14 are resolutions to appoint regular and interim members of the executive compensation. Policy Items 7, 8, 11, and 12 are the central office. They are-- please excuse me while I pronounce his names-- Gloria Palma, the Shriner Makers, as the interim senior university dean for graduate and undergraduate academic program. Demetrius Kateas as interim Associate Vice Chancellor for Design, Construction, and Management. Michael Guy as university dean of academic programming. And Lauren Anderson as Vice Chancellor for Career Engagement and Industry Partnerships. The chancellors and the members of his team, including Alicia Alvaro, Bohema Athalia, and Anne Lopes, are available to provide further background on this item, answer any questions. Policy Items 9 and 13 at Peru College include the appointment of Suzanne Bronski as interim Vice President for Communications, Marketing, and Public Affairs, and Michael Hughes as Dean and Chief Librarian. And the Vice President for Operations Administration, Elena Higos, is available to provide further background. Policy Item 10 is borrowed from Manhattan Community College. Liesel Jones as interim Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs. Vice President of Finance and Administration Julio Esquero is available to provide further background on this item. And at Guttman Community College, Rosalind Knight as Vice President of Strategy and Chief of Staff. President of Guttman Community College Larry Johnson is available. I move the approval of Items 1B7 through 1B14. Do I have a second?
Second.
If anybody wishes to discuss anyone individually, we may. If there are any questions or answers, seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, these matters are approved. With no more items on the policy calendar, I will adjust Section 2, which are the information items. There are three information items. Information Item 2A is an update on the fiscal year 2026 New York State Executive Budget and New York City Preliminary Budget. Senior Vice Chancellor and Chief Financial Officer New Solomon will present the item.
Thank you, Chair Berger. We have some slides here just to summarize Governor's Executive Budget and the New York City Preliminary Budget. This will track the summary that you had seen as well that summarizes it. But first, on behalf of CUNY, we want to express our deep gratitude to the governor for what is a very, very positive start to this budget cycle. When you add that on top of the eight-- I believe 8.4% increases that we received in last year's budget, certainly significant support, and we look forward to working with our legislative leaders as the budget process continues so that we have an enacted budget that really meets CUNY's needs. When you look at the additional operating support for senior colleges, you'll see, if you look at last year, the blue bar represents $36 million additional support that we received, and the red bar, it represents $40 million that was associated with the classified staff contract that was approved. This year, we have the $36 million continuing. We have the $40 million continuing. And on top of that, an additional $96 million in general operating support that will fund the line share of the fiscal year 2026 wage increases associated with the PSC ratified contract. As you see on the slide, there is a little bit left, a little bit more to go. $34 million that would be needed to fully fund, the $130 million needed for wage increases. On the retro and bonus aspect of the contract, the executive budget provides $192.2 million that is made available to us in our current fiscal year through a movement of payment dates. This is a mechanism that was similar to what happened last year with the DC 37 contract for the retro and the bonus of $38 million. So we see that included in the executive contract as well. I'm sorry, in the executive budget. Other new funding, $22 million for fringe benefits, which is on top of what was allocated for last year for fringe benefits. There are other inflationary increases that aren't funding, you know, OTPS inflation, building rentals, energy, those items in that bucket. There's new funding for ASAP and ACE of $8 million, so that's really a boost to those programs in addition to funding that we also get from the City of New York for those two programs. $5 million allocation for AI initiatives. In our budget request, you may recall, we had an item in there for $13.3 million that we had asked for, so $5 million in there. Really welcome, really appreciate that, and will certainly get us started on a lot of the AI initiatives that are currently underway at the university. And $2.4 million for TAP gap in addition to what was provided last year. The executive budget does not include or has reduced the number of items that were included in last year's enacted budget. This is sort of the typical first, you know, opening salvo. I think at enacted, there are a lot of legislative ads, and that will be part of the conversation with the legislature about providing funding for these programs and, in some cases, hopefully increases across the board. Moving on to the city's preliminary budget and community-- I'm sorry, not moving there yet, but moving to the community colleges, the executive budget continues 100% of the funding floor for community college, which is enormous for us to maintain the funding levels at our community colleges. As you see here, since fiscal year 2022, we've been able to receive that funding floor, which made sure that we didn't backslide in community college funding. Last year, on top of that funding floor, the state allocated $5.3 million in general operating support, so we're pleased to see in this executive budget that on top of the funding floor, that $5.3 million in general operating support continues. So that's good news for community colleges. And even more good news for community colleges, the governor announced and is included in her budget, the New York Opportunity Promise Scholarship, which essentially allocates $18.8 million that remains that will cover the last dollar costs of tuition, fees, books, et cetera, for community college students aged 25 to 55 that are enrolled in high-demand fields. As you see there, listed all of the fields. I don't have to read them all, but this is a really significant program. We think about 3,500 currently enrolled students will be able to participate, and clearly there is support for additional enrollment. If we can attract those in that age range and certainly enrolling in these fields, we have-- as part of the $18.8 million, money for academic advisement, program administration, marketing, so we can get the word out, hopefully invite additional students to take advantage of the scholarship. So moving to the New York City preliminary budget, first, we thank the city for continuing its longstanding practice on funding CUNY labor contracts as well. You see here the $13.8 million included for the classified staff contract that was included right in the November plan for fiscal '25, so we appreciate that. When the city settles for trades titles, tradespersons, through consent determinations in association with the controllers, those get forwarded to us, you know, along with the funding as well. So that's really helpful in terms of that funding flow. In fiscal '26, we also see the wage increases for the classified staff contract included. So we thank the city for including the labor funding. On the pegs, last year, as you know, there was a $15 million one-time restoration. We understood it to be one-time. The lines of communication remain open with the city. We certainly have several weeks to go until the executive budget, and the goal is, of course, to get the pegs restored. But right now, the baseline pegs at $95 million is what we're looking at for fiscal 2026. Similarly, with the adopted budget, the preliminary budget, it's preliminary, right? The opening salvo does not include items, programs, initiatives that were included at the adopted budget, right? This is a conversation with the city council as the budget process goes on, and, you know, we fully expect restorations and hopefully additions to many of these programs and initiatives. On the capital side, going back to the state, positive increases. You-- so first, we-- so a total of $497 million in new appropriations. What you see there is part of the 497, $284 million for critical maintenance. That's sort of the typical amount that we have been getting, right? So that's locked in, which is great to see. In addition to that, in the bucket of expansion and improvements, we see here $133 million for senior college research facility expansion, specifically research facility expansion. We think this is the counterpart to sort of the innovation fund that they did at SUNY. This is the CUNY version, so that is welcome to see in terms of expansion and improvement projects. In addition to that, there are some other funding, the $35 billion for matching funds for the community college projects, and $45 million for expenses related to administration. And then lastly, at the city level, preliminary budget on capital. They have published a 10-year plan. The 10-year plan, $1.56 billion, and notable projects in there, continuation of Spark and Kipps Bay, which, as you know, is a multi-year project, and some other significant projects you see listed there, LaGuardia, Bronx, Hunter College, and the Dominican American Cultural Center at $17.1 million. And that is the high-level overview. I am happy to answer any questions.
One major concern, and I think this is annual, is on the state budget mandatory increases, the inflationary increases. They always seem to leave us hanging for part of those, and we have to make it up. We're in the same situation again this year.
We are in the same situation. I would note that, you know, the general operating support that we received is obviously significant. There are-- there's funding that is flowing from other areas, but yes, there are items that have remained flat that haven't been increased, such as building rentals, energy, and the cost for OTPS inflation.
And the portions of the collective bargaining agreement that aren't funded, are we going to be able to recapture any of that, or do you think that's just--
Salary supplements typically are not also funded specifically. In our budget request, I think that we have about $16.6 million, if I'm not mistaken, in salary increments. Did I say salary supplements? I meant salary increments. And so, yeah, I mean, I think we typically work with the state to highlight that these are part of our labor costs. In the past, we've had to absorb them, but that's a-- you know, it's an ongoing conversation with the state about that funding.
And fringe benefits?
Fringe benefits was $22 million over last year's appropriation. In our budget request, we asked for $62 million, I believe, which represents the increase that you see in fringe benefits at the city level, which we, you know, request that that increase is applied to the state appropriation for it. So clearly not what we asked-- you know, we didn't get what we asked for in the budget request, but we are grateful that it's going in the right direction, which is up at $22 million.
And it's turning in the process.
Yep. Yes.
Locking and asking for money.
Do you have anything on this, Chancellor?
That would be part of our lobbying efforts to sort of, you know, raise that, you know, as we did last year, that we want our contract to be fully funded.
Yeah, well, I know that the Chancellery will do everything they can. I'm hoping that our students and our faculty will organize and help move some of these issues along, because, you know, you're much more numerous than we are, many more votes than we are.
And much more influential.
And you have a lot of power, and we're hoping that you'll be out there and working with us to, you know, try to pick up some of the pieces that are still not on the tape.
I mean, I'll repeat what I said at the committee meeting. I'm-- terrific presentation, and I love your optimism, which you're supposed to do. I don't think it's that great. I particularly irked, and I've said this for years, at the city, that the city of New York should frankly be giving us more money and be more amenable toward funding things that are vital. And I point to this mayor, previous mayors, and the city council as just not advocating for us the way they should. And I think that's pointed in this budget and has been in the last several. It's hard enough with the state, and obviously, you know, we-- bifurcated way we have to do things is we can do that, but how many members of the city council went to CUNY schools, have relatives in CUNY schools, have association in their districts? I mean, it's just-- and I think they're-- I am underwhelmed by their support.
I'm totally agree with Ken. And the city is the beneficiary of CUNY more than anything.
More than anything.
More than anything. It's just outrageous that CUNY doesn't get better treatment by the city. I don't know what it is. Kenny knows better than me. I'm not a political person.
No, it's a complicated-- there's no simple solution. Look, I'm glad we're getting this much, but we should be getting much more, and this should be more of an investment. It shouldn't be like another interest group, which is the way it's dealt with. It's just another interest group. They always want money. Oh, they're such a-- and--
But we're not.
And we're not.
Shortchanging CUNY is shortchanging the city.
And the future of the city.
And the city's workforce, absolutely.
The future. They're going to run the city. And it's hard enough running this place and with, I think, less than adequate support from all levels of government, particularly the city of New York.
When there are city council hearings, it's always fun, if you're a real nerd, to go to the meetings and say, there's a trustee in the audience, they're watching this, you know, they're interested. And, you know, most of us are city residents, right, by law? We all have council members, you know? Ask them why we aren't a constituency. I mean, it's-- you know, I mean, there's a lot of outreach that all of us can do. You know, 240,000 students can do more than you and I can do, but, you know, hopefully the Senate will pick up on it, and, you know, the PSC has a piece of this, and, you know, we're hoping the union and the other faculty members will put up on this. But it's the beginning of the process, not the end of the process, so, you know, we keep moving forward. Further? Lorraine?
Just a couple of comments, though. Yeah, we also have our part to share in it as well. We're holding some legislative trainings on the 31st and on the 7th to prepare some university student senate members and people, members of our delegation, to go up there and lobby. I'm leading a presentation about breaking that ice and also how to familiarize yourself and to have a genuine, authentic connection, right? Instead of asking for someone, asking for something from someone, building a relationship and rapport first. I feel like that is always the way to go, and that's what my presentation is going to be on. But more so than that, we're the people that they're supposed to be serving, right? And having us front and center, telling our stories, showing us-- showing them that we're not just numbers, but actual people with families and stories and dreams and aspirations, humanizing the student body, is exactly what we're going to go up there and do. And our legislative agenda, I'm sure you guys will be happy to know, it was pulled directly from the budget request to align what CUNY and USS is advocating for and asking for. It's a partnership, and it takes a community. So, thank you.
Excellent. I don't want to put any pressure on you, but on the days that we have city council hearings, it would be very impressive to have a few thousand students in City Hall Park with signs and whatever, because they can hear you in the committee room whenever they're making noise.
And you could also sit in the gallop.
Yeah, but that's small, but, you know, larger numbers make a bigger impact. You know, no pressure, but I'm just saying.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Lorraine?
Two clarifying questions. I should re-- Vice Chancellor or Vice Chancellor, whatever it is. But--
Just call it.
I just want to remind everyone, we all know this, but all politics are local, so when you approach them, you approach them about what they're missing in their district and who they're not serving in their district. That hits them a little harder than most. Clarifying questions. When you were talking about-- it always amazes me that it's a three-year contract, and it's not baselineed, and we have to negotiate it every year as if it was a new item. That said, you showed a $36 million gap, but then you also showed a gap-- you said that the city had $16 million towards that same-- I'm talking about salaries, I'm sorry. The salaries and the increases. Does that mean that we still have a $20 million gap that somebody has to fill? I'm going by the chart that you showed.
The chart in the beginning.
The chart at what? Yeah, that one.
So here, so this for the state support for the senior colleges. So the $34 million, so the-- per the contract, in fiscal year 2026, what we need to cover all of the wage increases is $130 million. So if we use the 96 towards that, we're short on the 34 just for fiscal '26, right? So moving forward, yes, the contract is, you know, through '27. So yes, we will have to come back in '27 to make sure that the funding for the wage increases are there, too. And then obviously, that base goes up, so it's in the out years. So yes, it's really recurring costs when we're talking about labor, and we would hope that those recurring costs will continue in the out years.
So my question, then clarify for me that the cities--
But we're short, yeah.
The city's contribution to that, does that narrow that a little bit, or that's additive?
No.
No, so, so this is only the state and the senior colleges. The city, the city's portion is in the labor reserve, right? And that covers the PSC costs, let's say, for example, in the community colleges.
Okay. All right, so then my other question is that there was this wonderful generous gift by the governor for community colleges at 100%. Is that fungible? You know, does that support some of the, or is it additive to the contribution that the city makes to community colleges?
It is additive, but it is, the appropriation language is pretty clear what the purpose of it is for. We are grateful to the governor and to the chamber and to the, and to the staff at the Division of Budget that we, on top of making sure that the last dollar for tuition coverage for the students is there, is that we emphasized, and with my partner here, Hector and our provost as well, we made sure that there was academic advisement in there, marketing, program administration, because we know what it will take to launch a program like this and make it successful. And the state came through with that in the appropriation, so we're grateful for that. So we provide sort of the full package of making that program successful.
And then my last question, sorry.
I just want to add that one of the things, and going back to the budget request that we all approve here, is that we've also been making the case to the state that a lot of these programs that are in high demand, that are in science, tech, out of health, are also more costly to run. So part of the additional funding to the CFO's point is that we made the case in doing that if you want to get more students who are gonna be taking these programs, we need some additional support because they are more expensive to run.
Yeah, I get that truly. My last question is, clarifying question, is the 133 million, and this came up in the, in the announcement committee, the 133 million capital for, for research centers, or is that, do we have flexibility in the use of that, or, or do we define what's a research center so that we could have more flexibility in that? I don't want to use the word fungible, but like, how much flexibility do we have in defining what's a research center and not for this designated pot?
Yeah, yeah, so the, the language clearly states research facilities, so we would have to see which facilities fit into that. But again, it was part of a, you know, a part of an announcement on an innovation fund, which is supposed to really be fuel that. That's not to say that we don't have significant needs across the whole portfolio for expansion and improvement, and so that's part of the conversation in the next several weeks, both with the second floor and with the executive chamber and with the, and with the legislature. So if we have various facilities or other facilities, then we can.
And that we designate them as research.
We can designate them as research, or it can be for something else that they add, right? That, that, that we expand our opportunity, expand our expansion and improvement.
Right, right, research.
But this is capital and not.
It's capital, it's capital.
Capital.
Capital, yeah.
Further questions, comments? Going once, going twice. Thank you. Information Item 2B is the biannual update on state one-time funding. We got the one-time funding. We ask them to keep us advised on how the money's being spent, and that's what this item is. Vice Chancellor?
Sure, just really quickly, on the $40 million that was first allocated in fiscal '23, there's about $7.9 million left. That'll be spent at the, by the end of this fiscal year. On the $50 million, there was about $5.7 million spent in fiscal '24. For fiscal '25, we have about another $11.5 that's been obligated, and so we are moving forward on obligating additional funds to spend down those one-time transformative funds that we're very grateful that we had access to.
And itemization on some of that was in our report. Thank you. Information Item 2C is the fiscal matter report. Vice Chancellor Solomon, please. Is there anything there that anybody wants to address? I don't think it's pretty straightforward. That's all I have, so with no more items on the agenda.
Thank you.
I move to adjourn the meeting. There are seconds.
There's a second. My second.
Any opposition?
Yes.
I don't see it all anymore.